Um, when, these are people who are at their end of the curse and around the cars. And they don't know when will you be taking the people who have expired their notice. Um, I went to look up somebody again to go to him at about six AM. And I found there were twenty cars that had the green stickers, the old stickers. And they, they feel that, you know, they, they're playing the game right. They've spent money, they, they went there first, and they see other people, and they're not getting tickets for this.
We'll get a ticket. We'll take it.
Okay, great. While parking, wait, thank you. I often walk down from my house down to the old pub. And um, even though we have those signs in front of the um, Broadway and the hotel that clearly say, no pickups, unless he leaves, uh, there's people that park pickups there. I probably got fifty photos in my phone right now, picking that. One person was so egregious, sitting out so far that the cars had to drive on the other, literally on the other side of the street. Um, that one I had to call then. And a little later, he had a ticket. But the thing is, if I'm remembering correctly, the reason for this is so that emergency vehicles can get through there. So, they get a ticket, but their vehicle's still there and causing a problem possibly for our emergency vehicles. So now I'm wondering, why are we towing these vehicles? Because if you leave them there and with a ticket on, it's blocking the roadway. That's my question.
First of all, if it's blocking the roadway, it would be totally blocking the roadway to be potentially towed. But if there's a, if there's still a means to go around it, we just take it. I mean, I'm sure if there was no means to go around it, we'd tow it.
Well, which is a, if the one person-
Yeah, well, generally, and to make matters even worse, um, for you, is I'd ask you to stop harassing people that try and park up there because I have complaints on you as well, harassing people to say you can't park there and, and, and giving other, it's like, you're not a police officer, you're not, if you want to call this, you call us and tell us about that. Same thing downtown. Uh, you have all these pictures of everything else. I get it, but unfortunately, I have five thousand residents in this borough that I got a pension. I can have people out there all the time running to your call anytime you call us and be parking.
Okay.
So we'll get to it. But unfortunately, I have other things to do besides going over there every day and worrying about who lets what. I totally understand it. If you want to come onboard, put an application in, people will hire you.
Okay, the, um, first of all, I, I don't harass anybody, what I generally do is when I see somebody parking, I try to say-
It's not your job. I try to, your job is to call us, not approach anybody and say, I park.
Okay, I, I, I'd rather say with a fifty dollar ticket, say-
Don't say, maybe if they get a fifty dollar ticket, they won't have to worry about parking their own, or go get a ticket and, no, don't park there.
Okay. So, when we did this, um, some kind of that, both you and the mayor said, when these vehicles come in, the mayor told me three times at various times.
At least-
And I know you, you told me at least once. So, if you don't want us to call in, I'm fine with that.
I'm not saying call Jim, um, you're perfectly fine to call in. What I'm saying is, for you, just call it. Don't approach anybody because in today's world, we don't know what could happen.
Yeah.
Let us deal with it.
Okay.
If you see this, somebody parking there, you go over and you're standing there, you wait for the officer, and you say to the officer, uh, do you think that something should be towed? If the officer says it needs to be towed, he will.
Yeah.
You know, but we're just not, we're not in a position at all points in time to tow. There's rules and regulations on towing a vehi- vehicles. It's not just, hey, we don't like your car there, we'll tow it.
All right.
I mean, I totally understand with, with the permanent parking, we're trying to get everybody onboard with getting new, uh, permits and stuff like that, so when we get complaints, the officers are over there, we'll handle them.
Okay. So I, yeah, I will, I will, in the future, I will not tell people that they're gonna get a fifty dollar ticket.
No, but let them, let them there, and you can call us all you want. I would suggest you do. He call, my officer, no problem, you call, you know that.
Okay, all right, good.
Just put a call. Yeah.
Okay, you're getting the answer.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, everybody. Uh, next topic was a public hearing, um, for eleven, twelve, for a new draft, short-term round permit application appeal hearing. Uh, the matter in front of the, uh, the variance hearing in front of the zoning hearing board was continued, with new measures there until?
It is, it's been continued for eight, until the, the applicant for the appeal of the short-term round permit application has sent a waiver to comply requirements and request that an actuary can push back to be able to change the meeting.
Okay.
Is that this, um, I'm sorry, is that this, uh, this Edinger and Associates?
I can hear what you said.
Edinger and Associates?
That's where it is.
Thank you.
The, the original order was through a state-
And that's the one that's been changed. Just wanted to confirm that was the date we were talking about. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, under the subdivision and land development ordinance, first up, we have the banning minor subdivision, dated August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. There are two waiver requests. Uh, one of them is a waiver request for section three, ninety dash twenty-one B one, in regard to allow a plant scale of one inch equals a hundred foot rather than one inch equals fifty. Uh, the request is being made to enlarge track size and simplicity of the plan will show better clarity. Uh, second waiver is for section three, ninety thirteen F eight regarding lot lines, uh, to follow existing borough township law. And then the third, third item was granting the borough ninety-eight-five extension to, uh, allow their, the planning engineers to redo and vote for the boroughs calling township. Um, there's some sewer testing, frame module items. Uh, so that is the, uh, time extension request until May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, the planning commission of the, of our borough has forwarded comment, uh, letter dated January eighteenth, uh, has a January planning commission meeting, they discussed the banning minor subdivision, uh, approval of the waivers listed, the colonial survey act, this letter dated, uh, January seventeenth, with the two sections I just mentioned, and the time extension, planning commission voted to, uh, table further discussion until corrections are addressed as per N T X letter dated December sixteen, twenty-twenty-two, and the county planning commission's letter dated December twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. We would also like to review the two facts from the colonial township upcoming planning commission meeting discussions. So we recommend the waivers as well as the grant of accepting the, uh, time extension for the property. Um, we have, here we go, for our listeners here receiving, uh, thank you for coming in.
No problem, appreciate it.
Uh, first off, the, I don't know if we want to go over some of these waivers. I know the first one, we've seen that one before, that seems to be a pretty common one.
Yes, and it's a, when we have a large tract of land, that's where it gets to be, uh, shown in a fifty scale, it would be multiple sheets, um, so, yeah, I'm in favor of permitting a waiver to, uh, one, one hundred scale. We can still see what we need to see on that one plan.
Okay. Yeah, I know this tract travels the borough and the local township.
Yeah, and, um, uh, the way the borough and township line, uh, they're, they're not in the street that actually goes through the upper lot, and would be just not practical to have the lot line follow that line. It's a couple, it's maybe twenty, thirty feet off the, off the road, um, so you wouldn't be able to get a, a suitable lot, you know, following the lot line. So that's the reason for that waiver request.
Right.
Does the council members have any questions for?
No, I sat, I sat in on that meeting, what are you saying? That's fine.
Very good. Uh, the next, the next question was, handy river states for residential agriculture and rustic camping, preliminary subdivision plans dated November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two. And also there's a time extension waiver request granting the borough, uh, until March tenth, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, once again, the borough planning mission forwarded a comment, uh, to the council, and they recommended approving the time extension as well as approval of the preliminary plans condition applying addressing concerns in N T X letter dated December twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, and as well as the county planning commission's letter dated December twenty, twenty, twenty-two. So I know Mr. Horn is here receiving of, 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 and then as far as, at that point.
Good evening, Bill, I'm, I'm, I'm so many years, as we just said, it's, it's, everybody. Um, since this is a workshop meeting, part of your recent repairs, if the council has any questions, I'll real quick over, you can touch on some. Uh, you see, received a recommendation of conditional approval for the planning commission. We have reviewed the last N T X year, and this was a memorandum from the county county planning commission. We can address all those concerns, many of which are announced by the final plan. You mentioned the time extension. Um, the borough solicitor and Mr. Arner's attorney are discussing, if you will, are reviewing these stipulations, settling for you. You're probably aware that the biggest question is the flexibility of this current plan, and they're discussing that as we speak. So we're hoping, quite frankly, that it could be resolved for next Thursday, and it will certainly facilitate a discussion. So the primary reason we're here is if you have any questions and not expecting any action, but if there's anything in particular, any concerns, if there, uh, one or two things going on, stats, or any of the particular comments, we can respond to them. That's, that's all the primary reasons.
Do you have any concerns about the roadblocks that you're facing, that I should pay more attention to than others?
When you say roadblocks, I'll call the engineering challenge, yes, marketing challenges, and, uh, uh, we feel we can address this challenge.
Okay, okay.
Will you be here next week?
Yes.
Thank you.
And one, one item that does, I think you said come along a similar plan, but not this exact plan, where, and I think this was one of the comments, and maybe, uh, Kerry government on this was under section two zoning ordinance, number four, accessory uses instructors, uh, a lot of graders, city cabins, camping, required facilities are permitted, uh, subject to land development. Uh, I guess one question, we have, what point with the scale of the proposed cabins, et cetera, what point does accessory use become a primary use? Kind of these problems, I think, I guess, I think this was, I come up before.
Yeah, that's a, certainly a good question. It's, it's somewhat of a gray area. Um, there is a provision in the, uh, ordinance that, that does allow camping as a use under that for tourism, but whether it's a principal use or an accessory use, I guess, is maybe we need further explanation on that from, from the developer.
My question, I guess, would be, what's the determination of the borough, uh, what is, with the zoning warrants, I haven't, love to ask to set up the, like, building in zoning warrants, but is there a particular concern, one way or the other, that would suggest that it's not permitted, in terms of how it's identified, say, or separate from the units that are required to be set under priorities?
What is it, within priorities?
Should we?
You say you consider them priorities?
If they're separate from the, the actual units that we built, it's not accessory to that unit as a garage to examine, but I believe that, that is the question we had in honor, that was in your comments, but I certainly look at that and be prepared, uh, maybe send something forward next week, certainly be prepared next, just not prepared to speak because I had another call.
Okay, so on, on your plan, you're not, you're getting it as well where the other are just there? The campsite?
Yes.
Well, I can answer that.
I think we definitely need clarification on whether they are priorities or, or what you're proposing.
I guess we have to know. So the, uh, maybe five percent of the entire agriculturalism parcel, and the rest of it will be put into the agriculturalism. So let's talk about it. I approve to put, they're in there, I'm finding out, I'm approving them, I'm approved to put a organic farm in, I'm gonna put an organic farm in. Um, I'm approved to put hiking trails in, I have hiking trails in, and I'm going to add them, and those are all agriculturalism items, and, and camping is a very small part of that. Um, I know that there's a lot of difference there. If you look at your, uh, proposed ordinance, uh, it says that camping should, uh, think of more than one point five acres per acre. I have over two hundred acres of agriculturalism, and we have a hundred and forty-nine, which is half, half of what the ordinance says is allowable. Um, so, um, the goal of the camp is to support the agriculturalism so that we have people present on site that will tend the, why are you that will tend the, for that, it would be very difficult to have a class, or to have a height, or anything like that, if, if you have five people show, you should have a camp.
Okay, so, so if you are including the campsite in your plan as an accessory used to be agriculturalism, can, can you have that on plan so that it's clear to everyone that that's your intent?
We'll open it up, uh, since that, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
We have any other questions? Because we've brought some exhibits, maps, um, one question was, um, in the stipulation, it's how an agreement talks about phase line, where it applies that route. And we had a map that will be very happy to show council and, and to show, um, your engineer that indeed that parcel is on, uh, the two thousand and four plan, which is referred to in that agreement. I just gave the original copy to Mr. Urban, and he's going to scan it in and actually send it to the supervisor and send it to you so that you can clearly see that, right? But it's absolutely on that plan. Uh, so, um, we believe that our plan applies, uh, with your solid zoning ordinance, and we have our expectation of the planning mission, and we certainly appreciate, uh, your approval. Um, I, I don't see where, um, we don't meet your requirements. So if you have any questions, I'll be very happy to answer them.
I have a question for you. I see some references in here to sewerage or sanitary, and, and some parts that have proposed central water facility, central sewer disposal facility, uh, there's portlets, and then in some areas it says there's sewerage disposal test pits. So can you explain what the sewerage solution is?
Sure.
I guess by phase, or somehow that, what am I saying?
If it's only, only residential, uh, it's planned to hook up through the rural sort of land. Um, in the meantime, we would like to put that as a, as a small community system on the south side of the property, the home side, um, for the campsites, so that we can put more of the porta potties there. That's separating ways is. Um, now, we, we are currently approved for rustic camping, that allows us to use porta potties. Um, I don't know what your preference would be, but, you know, my preference would, of course, be to have a flush, uh, and, and our porta potties do flush, but have a regular flush rather than porta potties, and, you know, we would like to upgrade to that as we get approved from Pennsylvania D E P. You have to understand that with COVID and this relation that comes, Pennsylvania D E P is very backup, so it's very difficult to get a permit, it can use, compared to that. Yeah, it's, it's hard to get a permit right now. So what we have is a use of porta potties, um, hopefully a use, uh, for a central system which is shown on the map, you know, or for camping, not, not for the residence. And then my residence is hooked up, and sort of switched over to the, uh, rural sort of plan. That's, that's what we prefer to use.
So what are the, what are the disposal, uh, test pits for?
If I can answer that, that, that is a comment in the letter, and we have the response. Those are physical features because they were actually excavated, so we've shown them on the plan just because they exist.
Oh, just because you did them?
Yeah.
They're not-
There was testing done over the long period of time, but they're, those locations are not going to be used, they're just depicted because they exist in the field. And Mr. Arner just described the, the two services between the campsites and the, and the proposed units or buildings.
Another reason that they're on the plan is those sewerage test pits are also used for groundwater infiltration from the homesites, et cetera. They are, so you can do sewerage testing for the homesites, but determine that the, um-
You could use-
Water being poured in the ground.
Yes.
Yes, so that was really the intention of putting those on the plan, was to show that the whole plan was already tested for, for stormwater. And we have a geologist report that says that the, in his opinion, the testing was so complete, uh, on the property, there's, there's so many of those, and you can see it all over the place, I mean, they're everywhere, uh, that he didn't feel that there was any need for any more testing because they were all uniformated. And that was from, uh, P D Mont and Baranov Consultants, um, so I will forward that to you if you would like. Um, he, he accepted it, and they accepted that when we got approved for the sewerage module, which we don't intend to use anymore. We, we intend to use that testing for, uh, stormwater infiltration on the residential blocks, so that's why they're there.
Okay, then back to the, the water and sewer. So I understand what you're saying. You're going to establish your own water, central water, central sewers, in hopes that eventually you might be able to connect to the borough system, but that's not a given, so you will establish your own system first.
Well, we have to, by law. Yeah, but we have that permit before we can, okay, thanks. And that's all the permits are run through Pennsylvania D E P and have very exhausted testing standards and deferals, so it's like constantly, and you have the right to observe the testing if, if you, you know, prefer to do that. Um, the company that was here for the planning meeting, uh, they're called Burris Homes, I hope that they will be here next week. Uh, currently, uh, they're taking part in the International Boulevard Show in Las Vegas. Um, so they're a regional builder, uh, they are, uh, very good working with municipalities, municipalities like them. Um, they are providing the funding for, uh, the infrastructure for the life center, and that's for a portion of the project. So, um, you know, I, they will just be here to introduce themselves, to answer any questions about Burris Homes. They came to the planning meeting, um, and, uh, we hope that it's approved, uh, we can, you know, regionally, go over, and if not, it's approved, because we don't have to take the base to, the business. So if you want to get in those things, it's all that we're going forward. Of course, you know, you want to be a better, uh, doing anything good.
I have a question. Can you explain the stormwater management plan? You did not submit the plans that they will be coming in.
Sure. So we currently have a N P D E S permit, which is an erosion settlementation permit, and also involves the approvals. The, the N P D E S permit handles with water ponds, the roads in Canyon River, so all the roads that were sowing will be handled by those ponds. The houses that are thrown in lots, it's Pennsylvania D E P's preference that they are handled by online infiltration pits. And the reason for that is it makes any stormwater that's created on the entire site, and it spreads to the largest area so that it doesn't impact any area. And, and that's their preference, and that's what we intend to do. Now, B E P approves, you know, according to standards, and it's very scientific, I mean, we have phone books of, of, of permits, and, um, it's current right now for what we have, and it will be revised to reflect any changes on this plan.
Okay.
If I can, to further answer your question, um, the engineer in the letter acknowledged that that's required for the final plan submissions.
Okay.
So if it was required for the preliminary, it would be part of it, required for the final, and we need to do that as part of the final submission when that comes out.
Yeah, I did, yeah, I did see that there was more in here, but I was a little confused because they reminded it again, so I wasn't sure if there was something different that was missing, because if it was part of the process, why did they put it in? But that's-
And the fact that we have a, a current N P D S permit, that's gonna certainly help. We still need to go back and get that permit revised or supplemented or replaced, whatever, based on the new plan, that's gonna be part of final plan submission.
So your, your N P D, where the initials are, is current for both, the phases under there in how one and two, with the eighty-four and, uh, is it the same permit, or is it two separate, or it covers both?
The permit is for the eighty-four lot plan, but the road system is essentially identical.
Can you use the microphone?
Oh, sorry. It is for the eighty-four lot plan, but the road system is essentially identical, so as Mr. Arner, a few moments ago, the individual lots could be done with one of our systems, but that will have to be addressed as part of the new permit or supplemental, or revised permit. We haven't gotten to the point to determine exactly what it is, but that will have to be somehow changed. But the fact that we have a current, current permit on the plan, with the same road system, makes it a lot easier to move into a new permit.
Okay, so we will, you will need a new permit for this proposed phase?
We will need, yes. Either amended, stopped amended, I'm not exactly sure. It could end up being a brand new permit, sometimes it depends on how much traffic is, but because of the preliminary sound, we've been already done, we're pretty far along, uh, as, as we may, as we would not be again, not anymore.
Yeah, the most targeted S P of homes, um, are you still looking at doing the on lot, stormwater controls for each lot? I mean, the, the lots are much, much smaller now.
Yeah. The answer is yes, but the devil's in the details. If we have to modify some of the facilities as a combination solution, not having done is hard to say, to say that it's absolute, to be, to be careful, keep everything on site. First of all, if we're not able to do that, we have to, despite modifications to the central facilities, but that's all gonna be part of the, as they say, the devil in detail, as we go through that design, we can judge the final plan submission.
So if you need to modify the base, you want to modify the easements and, and those areas, hopefully lots of that's, that's, we're gonna have to do, there's no question about that.
Just trying to try to point out, if you're the leaders, there's no guarantee that it's gonna work.
Sure.
What would be the timeframe to resolve all the issues that are listed? Because I believe what we're saying is, before this would be considered, all these issues would have to be resolved, and there's some significant ones, like the slope that's mentioned in here, um, so what, what do you anticipate?
They would be resolved as part of final plan submission. In those cases where it's set as part of the final plan, in the case of preliminary, um, we could reschedule the plan to make those changes, or patch the relevant minor from the preliminary, but they will have to be resolved when the final plan arrives. What we have is an N P D S permit at the time you receive the final plan, it's not typical, this Kerry problem, now, is they tend to be conditioned as a hurdle, but before final plan approval, all those items will have to be addressed.
Okay, let me rephrase the question. For the preliminary plan approval, when do you anticipate having whatever is, the items that are listed are relative to that corrected? Because there are some, some of the issues listed are applied to the preliminary plan.
Well, I think you had a longer angle than I've been already- Well, I think you have a longer angle than I'm going to. Typically, the preliminary plans, we usually don't record them. It's rare, very rare that they're recorded. So one of the questions we talked about internally is whether we revise and resubmit the preliminary plan. You have a recommendation conditional approval, so that preliminary plan could go forward with a recommendation conditional approval. Do you make changes and record it? That's pretty rare, usually you move around in the final plan. I can tell you that addressing the comments that are in the preliminary plan, what's part of the preliminary plan, are relatively easy to do. So it's procedurally determined that it can forward, but we can't typically not record the preliminary plan, so it's probably, you need the final plan something. You can not incorporate the same comments in the preliminary, you know, extend the comments to the final plan, you know, extend to rest of the preliminary, E D K all the times, all those kinds of things that are not part of the preliminary plan submission.
So this looks really big to us, but it doesn't look really big to you, is what you're saying. This looks like a big list to us, but it's not a challenging list to you, is what I'm saying.
No, it's a long list, but as you go through, you'll notice that many of them will say, specifically you're asking the final. I would say, just a wild guess, maybe a third of them will say, something needs to be changed now in the preliminary. But maybe you notice that it is very easy, there's no question that stuff required for the final is going to be more extensive, we're concerned about the lots, the steep slopes, the sewer system, the water system, storm, all those things, that's very complicated. And I can tell you that we can bring those inshore, but that's going to take a long time. Kerry's not, he's had.
There's a lot of work that they need to do here, yeah, between all the systems, the water, the sanitary, and the storms, so there's a lot of work that, but the way the ordinance, borough ordinance is written, that's all deferred to the final plan requirements. I think that's what Mr. Aron is saying, is that they will address these comments as part of the final plan, rather than coming back with a revised preliminary plan.
And we have made some progress, we've mentioned the N P D S permit, given us the like on the storm range. We have already talked to a contractor regarding sanitary sewer connection. We had a meeting here at Borough, there's available capacity in the plant, specifically aligning those across the plans, whether it's past the year, there's a couple discussions on that. We've already done some desktop studies for well sites, for the central water system, and probably in very near future, Mr. Aron is going to meet with the Hydro Dallas and our office and start sorting those out. So even though it's not part of the G C, we have to move forward on some of those things. Had a lot of work, I don't know if I can ask you, there's a lot of work down here.
Well, just based on the way things have gone so far, I think we'd want to see a very clear picture of what's being presented. So, and I understand that a lot of it gets taken care of in the final plan, but whatever we need to see for the preliminary plan, I think we'd want to see a clear picture of it.
I think he said he's going to do that for us.
I'm confused, if you're after this, this is a recent preliminary plan, is a change in the preliminary plan, we do that. Again, that is not a report. So you have a plan with conditional, with a conditional approval with less conditions you guys are addressed, but it's still a plan that's probably not going to get reported based on the typical situation. But if that council, you know, that's your brother, not to get after that.
I'm sorry, what would be recommended in that case, as far as preliminary, have a look back for cleaning up some of those items?
Yeah, I was going to say, if we could get approval on recommendation conditional approval, if you'd like, we can submit it later, but delay it or resubmit it in a few years, there's actually a recommendation conditional approval in front of you, with a plan which should recognize that those items are relatively minor, and it will be pulled up after council approval, which we can do. But we defer not to delaying actual conditional recommendation of approval on preliminary plan. But if you want to demonstrate, we can certainly send it in by the planning, Kerry, and we defer, yes, all the preliminary plans are checked off, well recorded, but we can do that just to assure you that they're addressable. And we actually have a response letter, frankly, prepared, we still have to make some plan arrangements, but we have a response letter prepared to answer everyone's questions throughout, not only the borough's initial letter, but also the preliminary plan submission, but we have a response letter to show they can address, but we prefer not to have this conditional approval, like borough council will delay it, allow it to address those, because it is a recommendation of additional approval.
I guess my, my one concern, and I don't know that I followed the previous explanation was, but the stipulation in settlement agreement, how that's going to apply? Because if that's not, if that issue's not resolved, then that obviously could have some impacts on even the preliminary plan.
My question, Kerry, let's put that aside, that does need to be resolved, hopefully by, before this Thursday, but ultimately, if that is a delay, that's a different story, because that is one of the comments to say, does it apply? As I said a few moments ago, Borough Solicitor and Mr., what did I do? Mr. Aron's attorney are actually discussing that, they already had lengthy conversation, they need to exchange these orders, and so they're working through that process. But in saying approval of the rectification plan is to recommend a conditional approval, one of the conditions is to determine that the stipulation settlement agreement applies, so we recognize that is a condition, but the other minor plan changes is one of the first in terms of not having to make those revisions to get that approval from our council. But clearly, the stipulation in settlement agreement applicability is a big issue that needs to be resolved, I presume, or is less of a recommendation back in the plan. No, we have it resolved here. And as Mr. Aron said earlier, I now have the, rather, all those, you know, so that party's favor, I scan those, distribute those, I can send it to Kerry, he's going to go to the two attorneys, I can send one to the staff, so they can share the counsel. And our feeling is that with that plan, using the stipulation settlement, you can see that that applies, but ultimately, you need recommendation on the thing, and Borough Solicitor has the case.
So we have two opinions here. We have an opinion from the, our planning commission, and then we also have an opinion from the county, which the county notes that there are areas of non-compliance, and that those should be addressed and or mitigated before quitter plan approval rejection. So how do we, how do we address that? We have one, two, three pages on these issues, and then we have the pages from our engineer. So are we talking about, which one are we talking about addressing?
Both, both conditional approvals, both our county's letter and the N T E C engineer's letter, both conditions of conditional approval, whatever comments are there have to be addressed. So I'm not glossing over, there's been a trust, but they do have to be addressed, that's part of the recommendation of the final decision.
There is a huge error on the carbon planning mission letter. I did forward the evidence of that to him. The major error that on, I have a statement, is that the plan was reviewed, submitted for review, I'm sorry, the plan was approved, and it's on, it's filed, and that's before page three fifty-one, and that's the Canyon Rim eighty-four lot plan. And then he says, a preliminary plan was submitted for two hundred and seventy-six R V lots, and that that plan was not approved. But what he fails to say is that he also reviewed the Canyon Rim two hundred and seventy lot residential plan, which was preliminary approved by the borough. And I do have evidence of his approval on that here, and I forwarded that approval to him. In fact, at the meeting in the planning commission, the public hearing, I told him that, interviewed him, and he said, well, he doesn't remember that, but that's the case. So I will show you, however, all the other conditions are mitigated by the, by the fact of that prior review of the carbon planning plan. For instance, he says, reconfigured Vineyard Drive. Well, it's not reconfigured, it's exactly the same as the plan that he reviewed before, and we have it orally approved. He says that, you know, for, for all the roads, he says that, that the only road that has a very slight adversity is Vineyard Drive, and that was to approve the road so that it went along to Pocrey. And we can show you, but we right now have a, a mylar, a clear copy, layover of the other plan, and you can absolutely see that the plan that the carbon planning mission reviewed, and the plan that you approved, the two hundred and seventy-five plan, is identical in road structure to the new plan, and two hundred and seventy of the lots are exactly the same, as the plan preliminary approved. So there isn't really a significant difference between these plans. There's a few lots that are added along, because they arose, we're not adding roads. So it's much easier than this makes it look. Do you have the overlay plan? I prefer to put it out on the table.
I'd like to say, these plans that you showed us at the planning commission, at the meeting that we had for the borough, because I think they felt that we needed to have a whole set of plans, because there was a lot to be looked at here, that...
Yeah, we have, we have that for you to look at.
Now, you mean, right now?
It is the same plan, and the mylar, the one that Mr. Aron referring to, the layover top of it, the previous residential plan.
Joanne, the planning commission recommended.
I know what they did, they said, right.
So they weren't looking for other plans for the preliminary plans.
Right.
So Borough Council, you can consider giving the conditional approval, or you can request that they make some of the changes per all of the recommendations that you received, and come back with a new preliminary plan that doesn't have as many conditions.
Correct.
And you still need to wait to see what the legislature says about stipulation.
You can see your map? Your map?
Put it over there. Put the overlay at the top of it.
Well, if we don't look at it now, then when are we going to look at it? Because the hearing is next week. So we look at it now, or we look at it next week, and I would like to look at it now.
This is probably the largest space for it.
Thank you.
Starting with this one. This is the plan you're now looking at, and you'll see the date on here is eleven eighteen twenty-two. So this is the plan that N T E C reviewed, this is the plan Carbon County Planning Commission reviewed. This mylar is the previous residential plan that was approved by the borough. If you carefully lay this over, jiggle it around a little bit, you can see, well, let me say this, you can hardly see underneath because it is identical. This is identical.
What is, okay, so the move, none of this is there?
You can see, you can see, like, here's the roads. Here's the road, and you can't see the road in the plan underneath.
So this is only, like, even, is that, then that's the line?
That's probably just a slight shift, if you move this a little bit or line up.
Yeah, it's the same map.
Does that name have the lots on, Flagstaff Road?
It does not have those lots on, Kerry, it's a good question, because they were not on that preliminary plan.
They were not on.
Right, which is one of the issues that I believe will be looked at in conjunction with the stipulation settlement agreement, yes. And I say identical, the point we're trying to demonstrate here is, and I think Mr. Aron referred to it, there's a number of comments in the county letter that's saying this road was changed, that road was changed. I don't know where that came from, because when I lay this over, it's identical. So we need to, if you will, correct that issue with the Carbon County Planning Commission, that when they're saying the roads are longer, they're making it sound that this plan changed. As it relates to the road system, it's identical, with the exception of this very, very slight tweak over here to accommodate grading, and as Mr., as Kerry just asked, those lots on the other side of Flagstaff Road are not on the old plan because it wasn't part of it, but the road system is identical.
Okay. I don't want to speak for Borough Council, but I'm just going to ask if it would be an issue. I know it shows cemetery, sewer, water, stormwater, but there are a number of other comments that maybe could be addressed and submitted as a revised preliminary plan. Get the list of comments found. Would that be a hardship to do that?
Only from the standpoint it would delay the approval, but in terms of the, being able to do it, it's not that difficult, but it could delay approval, we're trying to keep it moving.
Well, let's ask it this way, Borough Council, would that help with your decision on approval? Or are you going to hang with what's been submitted? That's basically what I'm thinking.
Maybe this will help. As far as these approvals, what actually does the developer want's conditional approval versus final plan? When does any type of construction begin through the, through these different approvals?
For the conditional approval, he cannot start construction, but it might be, financially wise, sometimes it's helpful for a bank to see that it got some type of an approval. I can't speak for their case, just in general.
They can't start final or construction until they can through the final process. So they still preliminary, whether it's conditional or not, they still need to go for final plan approval.
But the other thing to recognize is that breaking ground on an N P D S permit, if there's a new permit pending, is going to be a problem. I mean, you could possibly start building roads, that would not be advisable, but the N P D S permit is going to be a challenge, and you'd certainly want to have that in line before you start constructing anything. And I don't believe Mr. Aron intends to start any construction till at least for well long in that process. So even though we talked about alternatives with respect to whether we record or not record a preliminary plan, the issue of proceeding with the construction is a major financial issue, he's talking, talking to Burrow Homes right now, but there's issues to resolve there. We need to resolve some of the issues with the sewer and water to make sure that, that that is going to work, and you won't have any problem with it, we don't anticipate it, but we have to work through those details. But I would say the storm sewer issue is the big one, because you typically can't break ground without an N P D S permit.
I don't think Council is worried about recording the preliminary plan. I think the thought was to have some of the other questions answered from a poll of reviews, how they're related to the plan.
I mean, one thing that might help that I can do pretty quickly, quite frankly, the response letter is prepared and not dated, I can send that in, which explains exactly how we're responding to each and every comment in the borough, in the borough engineer's letter. And the reason I say that is that can easily be gotten in by tomorrow, so that by next Thursday, you have at least a response letter indicating how it's being handled. Change the plan, you can have it in line, I can't guarantee it quickly, Kerry, of course, would have to reveal and say, I agree to there, but to be able for council to look through the letter and say, I was wondering about number twelve, here's the response of what's going to happen, in response to that, I think that might help the discussions for next week, if you'd like me to do that.
I mean, I think we can follow this document.
Yes.
I would, I'm not, I can't follow this document, so I would like to cut it.
I think we need a new set of plans. Too hard, it's ridiculous. Can we, here, too many questions.
I have, I have an idea. Can you, can you do that with the response letter? Could you do that with this whole thing? Could you, can you tell us what you're going to fix with all of it? You know, before next week, send us the one from the engineer tomorrow, and then get us the rest of it as soon as you can? And then if it's still not enough for us next week, maybe we might still need more, we might want revised plans, but perhaps that would help if we have the full information.
So you understand the response letter? A response letter has the comment, word for word, below it in red is the response, on each and every comment throughout the entire letter. So my point being is I can get that here quickly, if we revise the plan and get it in, Kerry may not have time, but I, I can, I can honestly tell you, if you look at the response, you can see how minor the changes are, but having the response letter, I think, would help allay your concerns when you go through these issues to say, okay, I thought this is a major issue, I can see the response. okay, I thought this was a major issue. I can see the response. It's pretty clear they feel they can address it either now or as part of the final plan when the final plan comes in. That seems to be the biggest question because there's a lot of comments there. I can understand that.
Do you have time to review that next week?
Well, I'm not sure how quick I get it to you. That's the thing.
It's gonna be tight. You know, it doesn't give council much time to review either, but it certainly, it might help clear up some of the concerns. There's still going to be a number of items that will be final plan items, but there will be a number here that I think I can respond to.
So if you'd like me to do that, as I said, it's literally laying on my desk without a date. I put the date on, email it to all the parties. You have a chance to review that before next Thursday and it'll give you insight in terms of what ultimately will be done with the plan and the fact that many of the final plan issues will be addressed at the final plan stage. If that'll help council, if you'd like me to do that.
Awesome. Thank you.
And what's the agenda we have for Harry? Like during, like within, like.
Exactly. Exactly.
What Harry has for the great meeting, that's going to be helpful.
I mean, you're more than welcome to stay here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, minutes. The actions, the numbers one and two and three are here then, and then council meeting minutes from Amber. Any issues with those? Or that I want to throw?
Yeah, I noticed something, I know what Mr. Aron's reading today. On the January 12th minutes, the manager, did you mean Kemmer Park or did you mean Twining Park? It's written Kemmer. I thought maybe you said Twining.
I think in the beginning of the.
We were talking about the Bear Roots Grant. And it says, you thought that the trees were to be planted in Kemmer Park. I thought you said Twining Park.
Twining.
Okay, so that minor correction. So on page five. So on the January 12th, page five, two thirds of the way down. It's about the Bear Roots.
And there's more parts. And ordinary there. You're starting?
I have to get voice for the new server for the administration offices. I don't think you're on there.
Question report. Questions on the question report. On the vehicle traffic ordinance amendment for Cheston Avenue, no parking. Will be up for action to override advertisement. Our Act Number Seven, Officer Holner's resignation. Officer Holner has submitted a letter of resignation to the department. And Officer Holner will be pursuing a career with the Pennsylvania State Police. And we're watching for sorry to lose them, but I can carry on in service pretty well. Much success in up with the Pennsylvania State Police.
Good, please talk a second.
Yes. And then number eight. Is the, will be extending offers of employment to new officers next week. And either the officers are here next week?
I can have her.
I believe that you're planning to have them here.
I can have her. I don't know who cares what she's are.
Next week? Yeah, I'm, I'll be here.
No, I mean the officer.
You're planning to have the officers here?
Yes, as long as you're going to be acting on again.
Yeah. So one of the officers will be replacing Officer Holner. And then the other one is.
New one putting on.
That was approved with the 2023 budget. Number nine, Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs Annual Conference attendance. The Borough Manager, I believe, attending this unless others would like to throw in there. Day 2437, that pretty large. The Borough Manager will be the only one in attendance. We would also need action to nominate her as the voting delegate for the borough. Number 10, the Blight and Land Bank Workshop Event hosted by Senator Arbo here at Warrior Hall. Happy to be hosting that. The tentative date is the evening of 12th. There will be some approximately 100 people statewide program, a mini session and then some breakout sessions.
Can I, would you prefer me to interject? I was at, as you know, I attended the meeting last night with Mr. Horn and Borough and other boroughs regarding Blight. I would like the council a blessing next week to send me to the Carbon County Commissioners meeting on the 23rd, I believe it is, of this month. And to, and also not only authorize me to represent you, authorize that we stand with Mr. Horn and Borough in asking the county to enact, the Act 152 of 2016, in which the county, for every deed that is recorded, may charge $15. And that money, we put into a fund to fight Blight. I'm also, we're also going to meet again to, on the first of March in Summit Hill this time, to continue this discussion. I also want to bring up something that I wasn't aware of. Apparently there's a new state law out in the books where if we have a troublesome property and that same property owner says, say owns several other properties, we are now allowed to leave all of the properties that that same person or whatever entity owns. That's something new. I wasn't aware of that.
Wow, that is quite a law change. All of them?
That's what I'm told.
Wow. I'm sorry. That's shocking. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
So I'd like to mention that next week with our solicitor. And so I'm going to ask that you authorize me to attend the county meeting and authorize that we endorse the county approving Act 152. So that I'll ask you that for next week, but there's a hard, hard ask. If you have any questions. But the council lady from Nesbur Horning estimated that, I think it was about $96,000, could have been generated in, I believe it was last year with all of the deeds that were recorded.
Doesn't school county already do that?
I believe other counties do. And yes, that's a, that's a nice part, but I also, and they read the newspapers, they were aware that I want to, I'm pushing this land back. And I mentioned that Article's office should be sending an invite for Jim Sore in April. So I want to move, as long as I'm here, I want to move, move the land bank issue because I truly believe that it's just a hit and miss situation with applying for grants and hoping that you get them. And I gave out some of our experiences at that meeting. And believe me, everyone has the same issue. But I think we should, we agree that the state should be making more laws. One issue that I think that everyone has is we truly have to identify ownership. Even if you're an LLC, they have to enact a law that we get, some human being owns, ultimately owns an LLC eventually. So those are some of the things that we discussed. So I'm going to ask you a blessing for next week for that. So there were, let's see, Lancer, Summit Hill, Nesbur Horning, Jim Sore, Palmerton, and the High and Boroughs where they are. And we had a very good meeting.
Thanks, thanks for attending. Hopefully you'll be back in the program where you're supposed to be here in April or December, possibly.
I have a model resolution. I'll turn this over to you, Mr. President, for Nesbur Horning. We can edit this out then. So, yeah, I have some things to read. Oh, they also asked that we, the lady from Nesbur Horning is going to make the presentation, but they asked that we make a nice little picture of one of our worst properties. I want to write it to you before I set it up, but that they would like a nice picture sent to them so they can put that in their presentation. They want to show that every municipality, the problems of the property. So if someone could take a nice little picture and produce it and get it up in Nesbur Horning, I would appreciate it. And like I said, at that next meeting, I'm concerned, I guess we'll be March 1st in Summit Hill. So I think we're going to go round and round, but I think it's something that we have, you know, with the experience that we have, we got to do something better than what we're doing. And everybody, I think, agrees with that.
I have, I will take the picture. That's my neighborhood. So I can send it to the office.
Anything else on number 10, manager's attorney? Cover everything there? And what Jay's requesting?
Yeah, well, you can use it all.
Okay.
And we'll add Jay's on here.
Okay. Number 11, the Cuback, long standing Cuback 130, it's a tour. They're requesting use of the hall for two events, February 19th, their blue and gold banquet. And that is from the 30th to the 30th, including time they need for setup and cleanup. It's a Sunday. And then the second event is March 5th for their annual Pinewood Derby. March 5th.
That's a great question. Maureen, have they been, look at the hall?
Yeah, they used it a long ago.
Okay, because of the food pantry. And we have to talk to the church again like we did for the Halloween party, just to see if everything would be okay. Okay, otherwise it's wrong with me.
Yeah, I think when they were here for the rubber event, I don't think they had any issues.
Right. They did have an idea to start advertising for their blue and gold event. So if you can give me any indication of what I can let us know before this meeting, I would appreciate it.
Okay, any objection to this request? Certainly not at all. But hold on, because these are our future.
They had a lot of.
Not at all. They have done campus projects here for the Borough. Okay, utility gain reports, number 12. The agenda is reflecting that in light of the new bill collecting procedure, we no longer see the need to have a separate utility action portion of the agenda. So those will be, any items will be, future items regarding utilities will be included in with the normal action items. We're going to see fewer and fewer of those items that we were seeing for the. Anything further on that? Manager, I'm checking. Number, count, I think this is number 13, payment plan for County 695. Takes us down to committees. There's nothing under exoneration. Administration. Permanent parking. Borough is accepting comments until February 27th. Next is the full-time administrative assistant opening.
I have a question on permanent parking. I had a resident reach out to me, Maureen, would you just, I have to ask the solicitor next week. They want to know who authorized the permit parking on Broadway from state. I've talked to the solicitor about this, so I know that it's fine. I would like a statement on public record about it because it does come a lot.
What did you ask? Who authorized the permanent parking?
Yeah, that's what I asked because it's a state road, so it's a question.
Insurance, your question.
Thank you.
You did. Borough Council authorized.
I wasn't here, so what was that? That was voted in before I started. So I asked, I will ask the solicitor, can you make a note so that I don't forget to have this resident's question to answer? Thank you.
All right. Everybody wasn't enacted by.
Maureen, a resident asked me a question and I would like the solicitor to answer the question next week. And that's all I asked you.
And what was the question?
The question is, they want to know why the state, who authorized permitting on the state road? Okay? And I had a conversation with the solicitor about that because there are variables with state roads and permanent parking. This resident would like a statement from the solicitor on the record. That's all. I might not remember, so can you write that down, please, for next week when the lawyer comes?
I have it right now.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is full-time administrative assistant opening. And everyone has a copy of that in their packet. The applications will be through March 3rd. Anticipated consideration of this position will be April 13th. At the April regular meeting of the Borough Council. And we're proposing to advertise this position on the Borough website, I understand, in the year. Any questions on that? Again, this was part of the 2020. Again, this was part of the 2023. Uh, 2023 appointments, we had zoning hearing board alternate and international property maintenance board. One from Ted Huffman, 131 North Broadway. And one from August Law, 909 Center. We did contact the individuals, letting them know that we had both zoning hearing board alternate and international property maintenance board position. Mr. Huffman has indicated that he was interested in either of those positions. Uh, and when contacting, uh, Mr. Law, he said he was only interested in the zoning hearing board alternate position. So in light of that, I would recommend you put Mr. Huffman on the property maintenance board of appeals. And Mr. Law has the zoning hearing board alternate.
Right, they're both zoning board.
Are we?
Perfect. Well, they both, we did contact them, uh, asking them if they were interested in the, either of, since we had two for zoning hearing board alternate, either of them will be interested in property maintenance board. Mr. Huffman indicated he did, so we can vote the positions though.
So are we doing that tonight?
No, we'll, we'll take that.
Okay, all right.
That's just my recommendation.
Okay.
Most of those, most of those, uh, appointments are taken care of.
All righty.
Since he would, he indicated he would take the international property maintenance board appointment. Either or, Mr. Law indicated he was just interested in the zoning alternate position. One board.
Yes, that's me. Okay, I'm going to just read this out loud, and I would like feedback from council, although Jay just gave an excellent speech about blight and what could be possibly happening in county with blight in the future. So I don't know how much this is going to apply.
Well, in, in light of that, I think all the council members do have a copy of.
Right. But the, but the community does not know what I'm going to read, so I'm going to read it out loud. Because I wrote it. And it's not just blight that's on this paper. It's other things as well. And I would like council's feedback. Okay? I would like to further explore the comments made by Mr. Schanninger during January public comment. This is not a request for action, simply a request for discussion on how council can explore more creative options for our blight issue, as it appears to be hitting roadblocks with the traditional routes it's taken over the years. Here are some general points and questions that I would like to explore. How are other communities in the state handling blight problems? What can we learn from them? And how can we apply the methods that we like here? A board could spend focused time on grant fundraising efforts, relieving council of the additional burdens that these projects bring. Beautification can include murals over spray paint, artistic sidewalk repairs, organized event, organized cleanup events, painted public signage, and more. With the amount of local artists who live in this community, I believe that this could be done. Not only could we create a very unique community that reflects who we are, but we could provide work opportunities for resident artists, and this is not something that many communities are able to provide. The Shade Tree Commission is a great board that has a lot of potential, and perhaps we could consider combining that board with this proposed board to create an actual Parks and Recreation Committee. I imagine that the borough could accomplish much with a board like that. Thank you for your consideration.
Comments, questions?
No. Think of it as, uh, after February, Michael and I, and we'll get Michelle Gallagher, we'll get together and start committee. And hopefully that committee can come together and we can establish what I would like to do as far as getting containers at the various spots. I don't only want to take care of blight projects in this town. I want to get on the border of blight project. As far as doing sidewalks, that would be the last of my concern. I would want to take care of the blight and potential blight items. That should be the main concern if we're going to establish this. If at the end of that, we have time to go around and do other items, so be it, as far as being a beautification fund. But I would like to take care of, we, we don't just have four places in this town. We got a lot more than that, and we got a lot more that are close to it. And if we can just start whittling away, one at a time, I also would like to contact Habitat for Humanity, pick their brains, see if they could give a hand or at least interject what we could do. I think that would be a positive, uh, positive avenue for us to follow. You know, it's, uh, I think about that lady who came in here, her kid lived until 2006. And it beats the hell out of me every time I think that she came in here and had a, had to more or less beg for her kid. And it's not the borough's problem, really. But we should be doing a lot more than we can, and that's where it's the borough's problem. So, just first of all, next month, Michael had agreed, I think Michael's a great asset. Michelle Gallagher said she would get on board, and if we can get some other folks on board. And, you know, people who are prominent in this borough. And then, you know, throw out other stuff. Maybe you guys, you guys are, this town is bright. Maybe you guys can come up with some other things. But let's get it started, and let's take advantage of the folks who come into our town. Let them give a little donation at the stores towards us. That's all. Thank you.
Now, I have a question, because you just said the borough should do something, but then you said that you and Bob and Michelle are doing something. So are you doing something independently of the borough? Because if you're doing something independently of the borough, then you're going to do a great job.
Setting up a committee.
You're setting up a committee independent of the borough, is what you're doing. Okay, so you want the borough to do something, but you're going to do something first, is what you're saying. Because that was what you guys want to clear up, that you're not doing this with the borough. You're just doing this independently.
Yes.
That's all. Okay, Bob. That's, I just want to make sure that you referred here.
Senator, uh, Marvel, uh, you know, we have some other things, um, that are happening. And with Jay's, Lawson, and we, so this is kind of what I had.
That little girl, Nestle Horn is pretty short. And, uh, she has her stuff together. She got her ducks in a row. They got about 12 houses over there that are, uh, blight. They've knocked down, I think, three of them, but they got a long way to go. And she's got the right idea. Let's not just take the blight properties out. Let's, let's fix them before they're a blight property. And I think that's what we should be doing. Let's, let's take the blight property out, but then let's fix the properties before they are a blight property. That's, that's just my belief.
Uh, next up, zoning ordinance and maintenance, special district, District Sewage. Uh, we, we had, uh, asked for comments from our planning committee, I believe. I don't know if you can give us an update on that front? This was for the, uh, I think the, I think we need to table that?
Yeah.
We're on, uh, the zoning ordinance, um, special district. So we're, I think that's where we're awaiting comment for our planning commission on this?
Um, yeah, planning commission, um, they want to discuss it further at next month's, or excuse me, next month's. It'll be this month's meeting. They want to write a detailed letter as to their concerns in reference to this.
Okay.
That's too much.
I'll just leave that. All right, so we see that item there until we hear from our planning. Next is.
Great, excuse me.
Commissioners?
Great, Maureen. Okay, I have a question on that, if I may.
Yeah.
Does counties have proposed arrangement or offer to buy the land? Does that affect our consideration of the special district?
Well, I mean, that's, we managed to be seeing what's going to happen there, but I guess, I think that if it does, uh, the, there's going to be some remaining lands, uh, that not only do the mechanics own, but that there's other residents that own tracts of land out there. And I guess that's up to council, whether they want to continue pursuing.
Allenor and McGarry property, Allenor's property is quite big.
And we have, um, some 30, 40 acre tract. Sitting adjacent to the Canic property. So that's, I guess, answer your question, that's up to the council to decide whether we're putting it down.
It would not affect the way I feel about that, either, either we're for it or against it. On lot septic out there, Michael. I'm against, I'm against on lot septic out there, and you know that. But it, uh, then buying part of the land would not affect my, uh, hope.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the next item was the Department of the County Board of Commissioners invitation. Some of the new ones, like the initiative of Commissioner 27. He has signed his letter, they want him to join a state of municipality for the municipalities in the county. Has to be represented from the borough to here and give a statement for the borough.
Mr. President, I would say that if the council wants to do it, that the president of council do it. Um, if we don't have to do it, it's just a county request. You were charged by code of signing ordinances, running the meetings, and I believe this would be right in that out of the wall.
Yeah, I wasn't sure how, you know, I felt bad for anybody else.
No, I, I don't either.
But I didn't know what, what the real purpose of it was.
I just said, if, if we decided to do it, I would recommend the federal, county president would.
Can you get, can you get an excuse to get out of school? I mean, in the summer, you can do it, right?
Summer, I agree with you. I guess, um, you opposed to it? I don't know what timeframe you're looking at. Did they, did they, did they see that in the letter?
If, if, if we do do it, just, uh, I think we even brought this on the last, I'd include blight in your state of the, uh, town.
Okay, well, I guess, whether they're looking for something in the year to be done, I don't know. Uh, you do this about, you have a schedule, we'll come on a first come, first served basis, so I guess we have some time to.
It seems you can pick either Thursday.
What?
It seems like you could pick either Thursday with the number of municipalities. I don't think they all do it on the same day.
No, no, I'm assuming you're going to have one, one to come in at a time. And that would make the most sense, other than that, that'd be one long queue. I'm sure they're getting this pretty full. All right, uh, draft check, what do we do with that? Uh, I don't know. I think it might come with the, we feel that it's, we have something to, that we want to report to town. Of some states that they don't already, aren't very aware of. I'm not always designing all of them.
The sidewalk.
I think they're, they more or less are doing this the way we're residents from the state. They're considering the county committee.
I have a quick question.
It's like a way to communicate with the county, I think. I think it's good.
Um, just, uh, naturally, you're going to have to prepare what, what items you, we, we believe, um, should be included. Other than communication, maybe grant, uh, issues in the future, um, I don't know. I think they're limited as to what they can do also, but it's good, communication.
Okay, let's get a school door, that's something that's 15 minutes limit, so.
Put it in your hands or will you approve?
Yeah, we'll just have to determine. Set a determined date. So it would be, uh, ideally, I'll, I'll probably. Probably summertime when you're actually off, you know? Yeah, unless there's a, when are you meeting, Thursdays?
Thursdays at 10, I believe they, uh.
It says second and fourth Thursday at 10:30 a.m.
Yeah. I'll look at the school schedule unless there's something, a COVID or something. And those days, other than that, it's going to be, uh, yeah, sometime after noon. All right, uh, one lot sewage management program ordinance. Uh, I guess at this point, either our options are authorize the planning commission. Planning commission has looked at the draft. I believe we had our sewage enforcement officer look and give a comment. We could have planning commission, I guess, or sewage enforcement officer come line up where you love it. Or, uh, we could authorize advertising at this point in time.
Did they, did this SEO and the planning commission sign off on this draft? They're good with it? Is that what you're saying?
No, this is the final draft. So this has changed, isn't it? From the SEO and planning commission.
Right, changes have been addressed.
Please.
The changes have been addressed and.
Yes.
Revised.
So would they have a problem with it, or we could move it off? I mean, if they don't want to have a problem with it, I'd say move it off. But I, do they need to check it again?
Any comments? You chose one change you wanted to make and authorized the solicitor to do that. So your choices now is you can send it back to the planning commission so that you can see the final draft now of the changes. And any more comments if they have any, or are you using, I don't know. I don't know that there were live comments that, that it might make a difference to the planning commission?
I mean, I, I guess, we would, uh, have to determine, are we in approved favor of all this?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Well, in the comments that the planning commission had, were, they wanted verbiage changed in the sewage unit for the district, if you remember, we took that out. Because we don't have as many houses as the lot of organs, so we didn't need districts.
There was also something about the hauler, the license, and it was changed to a.
Right, it went from contractor's license to, um, I'm not sure.
Sewer hauler. Pumper haulers of septic should remove septic from tanks within, shall obtain a borough sewage pump hauling license on an annual basis. And that was a change because it seemed like it, there was talk about all the contractors, so this was separated in specific.
Correct. So those were the, uh, the, the, the condition.
Well, then both of them were addressed. I would say.
Yes.
That's resolved.
Any other comments, questions on that item? Those that have one lot systems, is that something of value? Or does any, any of the birds, sort of, the residents, are people already doing the three-year pump outs? Is that something that people are normally doing, because now this ordinance will require that, that they're.
Well, if they're not, they're, they're, uh, helping so.
But, uh, they have, they have, uh, sort of a indirect way, it ends up helping some, uh, or something is addressed as, I don't know, any on it, or anything?
Well, what you don't want, what I, is I don't want to see another chipmunk trail issue where we were told that, uh, systems were failing, there was nothing wrong with my system. And then we, uh, had to put in the grinder pumps. So I don't want that, I don't want that to happen to anyone else in any area of the town. Um, and it is this very, very smart move, it's like, um, claiming your toilet. Whether there's a ring in the toilet, you clean it, well, every three years, there's a ring in the septic system, take it out. And it's gonna save you in the long run a lot of, uh, unforeseen, uh, large bills.
Yeah, that, that seemed to be a pretty common interval, was it, a three-year?
That's what I.
Like a syst, an in-ground system you have.
That, right, that's, that's what I had up there. I had an in-ground system. I was in a, I'm in a red shale pit, um, good drainage. But, um, I made sure I had it pumped out. And I kept marking on the cellar wall, you know? And it's only good, it's only good for your, your own, um, financial health.
And Jay, if you recall, we were supposed to go with the other one, if you recall.
Yeah, well, like I said, I'd like to.
The budget would happen.
Someday I'd like to get on the, uh, uh, menu here and talk to council about, uh, what I think about grinding pumps and.
Yep, I agree.
My experience with it.
Well, some of the, some of the, um, concerned had, uh, come, come past there. All right, um, so. So far, restoration spirit may be on the, uh, the, uh, the, uh.
Um, so far, we had five meetings to date, two of them were site visits.
That's incredible. We've had three meetings, one of them was a site visit.
No, we had five meetings.
We had three meetings. We had one in September and one in December and one in January.
Okay, all right, please.
Okay, um, Thomas Environmental, who is contracted through Wildwinds, uh, was the lowest priced RFP out of four engineering firms that applied. Uh, the planning phase of this project is mainly being funded by two grants through DCED and DCNR. Additional grants will be needed, uh, so additional grants will need to be applied for in the future for additional funding for construction. Surveys and testing are to start the beginning of the April, and it's all dependent upon weather. Once surveying and analysis are completed, the design plans will be drafted and submitted as well as permit preparation. Um, they're anticipating, uh, completing the design plans by October. And Wildwinds is going to be the one supplier for funding for construction in spring of twenty twenty-four. And if, if funded, construction would occur at the earliest of summer of twenty twenty-five.
Brooke, why does it say there have been five meetings? We had three meetings. We had three meetings. Do it again.
More to acknowledge.
This is a lie.
If all the other members, please ask to be acknowledged.
This is a lie. This is a lie. We had three meetings? We had one site visit. We had a meeting in September, we had a meeting before the holidays, and we had a meeting in January. Correct that information, please, or give me the dates for all five meetings so that I can correspond with my emails to see where these two meetings that I, as a committee member, forgot.
I can get that to you tomorrow since I can't access my files right now, but.
And of course, Maureen's not in here, so, thank you, Brooke.
I didn't hear that one.
I said, thank you.
No, we're saying you.
We can't hear you with a.
I'm not taking my mask off because there's black.
Maybe step back from the microphone, it's real muffled, thank you.
You'll get those dates to me tomorrow?
Yes.
If that is incorrect, I want this corrected for next week. Thank you. That's all.
Next, you have the live stream requests.
Yes, I would like to amend the motion that we made to include all of the meetings that we have. Now, I have a sample amendment, or I'm sorry, I have a sample motion that the county, I pulled it from the county website for their live stream because they include everything. We would have to change it to suit the borough, and I believe the solicitor could help us with that. I'm going to read their motion out loud. Um, motion by Mr. Lupacevic that the Director of Information Technology, within thirty days, develops courses of actions for phase-in live streaming, recording, and posting to the county website and social media platforms of all county public meetings to include, but not limited to, Board of Commissioners, elections, salary, retirement, planning, railroad, and prison work.
Well, you see, the council gets to decide what, how that works. And the council did decide that the borough municipal meetings is a live thing, both the workshop and regular meeting, that we have the personnel to burn it, also the planning commission meetings, that's both tens, as well as any special meetings of council.
That's right.
That's where we decided to start as a group. That would be my recommendation, that we continue moving on to that, in that direction. We were asked to do it, we, as a council, we moved forward and commented back twice as we were able to do it this one time.
The community is under the impression that the request was for all meetings. So you did not acknowledge that at the time. And the community, who has sent emails and has petitions going, would like all of these meetings livestreamed that we have. So my request is to livestream all meetings as the community requests. If the community was not requesting this, I would not make a deal about it. But I listen to my constituents. I have seen a petition, and we have several people, and, I'm sorry, go on, Michael.
We've got one email, two emails, both from the same.
Actually, no, uh, several people sent a copy, graph email. Greg, please stop. The community would like the meetings livestreamed. Are you going to honor your community, or are you going to honor yourself? Make a choice.
You've been accurate, the community is not asking for that, that's your opinion, and that's not based on fact.
I said what I said. That's my request. It can take a week to think about it, it'd be stubborn.
I guess my question would be then, who's gonna report all of them?
You, cause that's your job, you come to the meetings.
I have my borough secretary responsibilities with me right here, and they say that I only have to attend council workshop, council regular monthly meetings, attended budget workshops, and special meetings of council, attended planning commission meetings.
Which one of you two attends Wildwinds Conservancy meetings? And which one of you attends zoning committee meetings? And which one of you report? How about that? It's pretty easy.
Who's paying for that?
They attend, they go to the meetings, you bring the phone to one meeting, they go to another meeting, they don't bring the phone to another meeting.
No.
Yes, that's.
You're right on what we're gonna do, and that's how it is, you don't like it?
I said what I said. You all do not wanna report meetings that the community wanna see, they think it is lying, they think it is deceitful. I called you all on a hidden email, you want to continue to be stubborn? I said what I said. Bang your gavel all you want, Gregory, I don't care. You are lying to this community. A theatrics playing? I'm playing to what I say. And you can sit up here and disrespect and belittle me all you want, but it's not gonna make you right. And it's not gonna make me wrong.
Move over, Gregory.
Well, uh, what's your Broadway lights? Uh, my update on that from the P P M.
Yeah, just a quick update, we're looking at spring, early, uh, summer install of the lights on West Broadway, the black lights. And, and we're also trying to schedule a meeting, wanting to discuss the possibility of grants and the Victorian lamps there. We thought we had a date, but we're still going back. So let everybody know where we're at.
All right, next was the Popeye Mall in Visser's Bureau, and the impact grant.
Yeah, for this grant, and this is a fifty-fifty grant. We go, we go, they historic theme, and that would include Southern Range work over the mansion, carpet, and two rooms of the mansion. Historic light lamps for downtown. I don't know who's aware of that, Waste Management Club, that image to one of the Victorian light posts, and not one of the lamps. And she has one, they don't make those lamps anymore. So we are working on prices for a different type of lamp. If we're able to get a plan, depending on what the prices, perhaps we can have new, updated Victorian lamps for the entire Broadway, instead of just one lamppost having different lamps. And then the bottom line of it is, um, upgrades to the pedestrian buttons, to the traffic light in Pennsylvania and Broadway. It also has a, uh, a deaf person feature. So that it would bring it into ADA compliant, we actually had a request for that last year. So we thought this would be a good project for those historic items in the downtown area. And so we would just be looking to council to move on.
Maureen, excuse me, please, could you repeat the item for Asapacker Mansion?
There's the range work at the mansion, and also carpet, and two rooms for it.
Thank you.
We have a little bit of ten thousand dollars budget for some of the items, so that would be our mansion.
Okay, then, uh, last item, uh, your administration was the Pennsylvania Zepplin of the Regional Rehabilitation.
That's just an update also. I contacted Maureen up front on the program to see if they were interested in doing it again this year, and she's due by the end of the week, so it was good timing. And they were interested, I set up a meeting with, um, Joe and supervisor McGary to sit down and discuss different tasks that we can, if kids can do this year, and help with ours, then we will be able to report it.
Great, well, I'm here.
Yes.
Most experienced. And, uh, that, that, the boroughs was ready to move forward with that, free institution that only can be on an annual program in the borough. Uh, the public services, uh, Source Santation Water and Streets, Front Street Stormwater Project. We've been discussing discussions with, uh, from Fire NISIC. We have a total project cost there. And we, uh, we have a shortfall of about a hundred fifty-two thousand dollars for this project. Total project four hundred forty thousand. And we have budgeted two eighty-eight, uh, we are applying to the PA Small Water Grant, which won't, won't hear on that until summer finisher.
What, what they're telling us is sometime between July and September, we will hear on the grant.
Okay, so I guess the question would be, would we be waiting for that, Brett? To hear that, or move forward with somehow funding it through the borough?
For that amount of money, this is no money, I think I can win.
I think I can win too, I think I thought too. So, more change. Uh, twenty twenty-three voted aid projects. It's like the, uh, the public street supervisor, Mr. Shuck has recommended it, Seventh Street, Wall and Avenue, and Chad. Those are the twenty twenty-three projects.
Jerry, you want to talk on that?
Um, the listed projects are essentially the, the projects that we could come up with at a time, um, if we felt, if we, that we could fit with any budget. Um, there are certainly some, some other projects that we could, that we'd rather, you know, for, for the money we can. Um, we could have given one of those, because of the storm water issue and things like that that would be, so. These, these projects fall into, we feel, fall into the budget, now we have.
I, if I may, Mr. President, I, um, and I, I'm a proponent of curbing and, and drainage. I'm also a proponent of getting things done. So we have to, I personally have to come to some type of compromise. Um, I believe that drainage is a big issue and has to be addressed, but, um, this hot, this front street is now is up to four, four hundred and some thousand dollars, so. I think we should do these paving projects, uh, to show that we're out there getting some things done. It is what it is, and it's, it's very, I, I said at one point, I don't know whether it's this term that I'm in right now or last, but I see, uh, drainage at a municipal authority level. Talking millions and millions and millions of dollars to overcome what we have here. And not just, uh, a street committee trying to get some things done. I still believe that, so.
May I ask a question, please?
Sure.
So, one of the questions asked on here is, are intersections included? And if so, will they require ADA curb cuts? Is that actually an option? Is that really a question that gets answered? I thought it's just done.
On a state highway, yeah, but.
Well, how about a borough, how about a borough intersection?
No, it, um, I'm, I'm not sure, but I know it's enforceable on state, state project, but, um.
Some of these areas, Michael, have no curbing.
No, I get that if there's no curbing, absolutely, but if we're installing it, if we're starting fresh, or rebuilding it, rebuilding curbing, wouldn't we want to just do it? Was that?
All this is, is blacktop.
Okay, so there's no actual curbing?
There's no curbing there, that's why these were chosen.
Yeah.
These are not full restoration projects.
I'm sorry, Joe?
These are not full restoration projects. If you were the entire road to be excavated, curbing would be added, storm drainage would be added, things like that. But this is, these are not.
Basically just paving.
These nine inches of pavement, they don't.
I was just sort of alerted by that question.
Joe, we have something where we're gonna look at some of the areas where you can't overlet your roads, get some patchwork to help keep some of the roads that we do from deteriorating, whereas I know there are some spots around.
There are some of the spots around, you say, there are, that are weird, basically, um, engine projects and whatnot.
Normally, people would fill out a request for action for it, we get it to the streets of our country.
Could we have an action for a few more for the roads? Yes. Twenty twenty-three street sweeping. We have a service agreement with a plural sweeping. Sweep all municipal streets, totally twenty, roads are also forty curbs. These towns supply an upside for the sweepings, uh, collect the, uh, adwit, where then, um, on fire irons with the sweep, sweepers, dust control system, both dumping, uh, and water shall be located within the confines of the municipality. Municipality will provide fuel for this sweeper. Operator will be provided for two weeks, starting April twenty-fourth through May fifth, twenty twenty-three. Closing of road will be scheduled properly due to ensure productivity. Cost will be twelve thousand, five hundred dollars.
Is this the same cut as last year?
I believe it is.
Yes.
And what was the difference in price? Does anybody know what it was last year compared to this year? It was probably four thousand last year.
No.
How much, Bob?
It was more than that. And, no, it's very, um, I think it was left out for last year, so it's very close to last year. And I think we went over a little bit last year.
And they did a pretty good job.
They did do a good job. They ribbon out that one, right?
Morton's, Morton's a big outfit that does this town, the Lea Valley. This guy's from Landmore, that's Bucks County, that's big bucks. Maybe Morton's could give us a better price. I'm just curious, that's all.
I, I can't have you call me.
Yeah, this is, this is ridiculous price. Yeah, this is, this is ridiculous price.
Can't hurt.
And this does include all pads in the price, right? I'm sorry, this includes the pads in the price?
Yes.
The brushes?
Brushes?
The brushes.
I, I don't think so. I'm not sure if they did it.
Well, I think it's stated in here, it said that they're additional. Doesn't say it's plus or minus.
Just, it doesn't say that, Mike.
It doesn't, it doesn't indicate that we pay for it.
Right, right.
Twelve five, yeah, tight. The, as you know, the cog solar sweeper, I went through that lightning one time before, so, um, and that's, that's two weeks worth of work, I believe, and that would be ten, ten days of sweeping.
I think we were at Landmash, and we were wondering when three was, and we were wondering about $500.
Yeah, fourteen last year, actually. Fourteen.
Fourteen last year.
I think I said the, we sweep once, we sweep once, and it's a tough sweep because we don't have our own sweep. Like, I'm pretending more, uh, behind their lamps for having, you know, do this on all the time, well, on winter time, you know. So we, it's a tough sweep when we use sweep. But I don't, I don't think that's bad for, for ten days' work. Yeah, to check that we're not buying brushes for them.
How do we deal with cars getting registered? We don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, we mostly get involved, and if we came down with a sweeper, and they were feeble, so there we told them.
And I, I, that's a good idea because we're, you know, we're doing this at once.
And we told them.
And we already discussed with the streets department posting, eight earlier than we normally do, so we'll do that after this.
Next item was the reader for the water treatment plant.
I'm very, Mr. President, I'm very happy to see those, these things coming out. These were two punchless items, what I call punchless. Joe, I know we have the normal ones, along with the water department, so I'm personally very happy to see these, the last, these things get approved, Mr. President.
And I think the, this was what we upgraded, the way we read the meters, and I think that device is just replacing that device.
The other angle was the inaugural line of the water meter. So they've been, they've read something off that we.
Is this the Co-Stars price? Did we get the Co-Stars price in this?
I don't know, I'm not sure if they are Co-Stars. They are.
Yeah, I'll be as quick as I can.
And the amount of control that I'm, the next item is, is in the neighborhood of what we were discussing, so I think that's why I'm going to do all of that. Or did we already approve this?
Well, it was in the budget, but we thought we needed an updated price.
You're correct, I'm sorry. We need, we need an updated price, but I still think it's in the neighborhood.
It's the same.
Yeah, it is.
The only thing is, it was, we did send the terms, conditions of sale over to solicitors and managers, we had some comments. We received responses back today, so we just need to make sure that we're either next Thursday, otherwise it would just be conditioned upon the solicitor and manager's approval of the terms.
Get her, yep, get her done. And that, this thing is the big elephant in the room.
Yeah, and that's, you know, eighteen to twenty-four weeks out.
I would need to clarify that, her manager suggested, he should be great with that.
Wonderful. Next is the water treatment deployment, and this was the position to fill the previous public service manager position, or I'm sorry, the public service, previous public service manager, guy who did the, the position, he never filled his position. So this is now, several years later, filling that position. So what's our recommended course of action?
I believe the, Mr. President, the borough manager gave us a time, we have to put it to the union, post it, and then there is a timeframe, so we just have to follow that timeframe.
Yeah, we didn't have a draft of the position to be advertised, and they go out to the water department, and Mr. Shannon, you've had some comments, and I did share that with Joe, Joe had some concerns, though, so you guys want to talk about how you want to do that, what you want to require, prefer, what type of, and it has to do actually with a CDL license, it's not a water department. And that's to be discussed, so I don't know exactly what kind of be advertised.
Are we discussing it now, or?
Yes.
So you're, you're referring to the, having a permit rather than a license?
This is the, the CDL license. The name of the class B CDL writer's permit required, which was a change from last time, less had a relation to the department. This would be a permit required, must obtain the license within six months of higher. Must obtain class A, only or within two years of higher transfer, and also must obtain tanker endorsement within six months of higher transfer. So now the tanker endorsement, we can go on the CDLV, right?
Yes, I have a tanker endorsement on mine.
Okay.
For the fire department.
All right. Bob was concerned with the, the costs for an individual to obtain all of these things.
The reason being, now if you're not a permit, a CDLV permit, before you can take the test, you have to do an entry level driving training, that's called ELDT, knowledge. And that's fine, I don't know what that costs, three, $400 every bit. You also have to go through ELDT training. I said before, and I'll say it again, that's what I do. If it's a class B or a class A, I would do the training, fill out the forms, there'd be no charge, and the guy would pass. That's where we're at. For a class A with no, it sounds like a piddle looking trailer, so that would not be a big deal. The tanker endorsement, that, all I would do there is take the knowledge test and the endorsement would be added to their license. It's an eighteen question test. If they study the four pages that are in the CDL manual, they won't have any problems. But if a guy has a permit, he can't take that license, he can't take that driving test until he gets that ELDT training done. Nowhere, no, no state, that's a federal mandate.
I would, if Bob is willing to do this for the borough, let us lean on Bob.
I'll do the training, I won't do the, I'll do the training on a truck, I won't do the knowledge part.
All right.
We're, the person's, this is where the borough comes up and says, okay, we'll pay for the guy to get the knowledge part of the training done. That might cost the borough three or $400 if they think the applicant is good enough. I know we don't pay for the permits, that's fine. That ELDT is entirely different. That's up, that's up to us, what we want to do in regards to that.
I think this is a good compromise.
Mark?
I think it's a good compromise. If he least gets the permit, he shows a tank, or she, he or she shows a tank in her, through the law in the process, so.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. That, that's one issue. The other is, with, and Joe was the planted certification, you know, then I always, I always, we have to stress that, we have to make sure it's there, you know, that this person is, is fully aware of that, so we don't have any questions in the future of what's expected of that person, that they have to be certified, planted, certified operator, and I think that's spelled out in the, in the description, so I think we're good, and it's so Bob, thank you if you're willing to do that.
Yeah, it'll take a while.
So does that, we have to change on the wording of the application?
Where, where?
Obviously, obviously.
The mechanics, the mechanics are a little different.
Yeah, we'll double check.
Okay.
Um, under the lease, there will be no parking lot, we got some confirmation there, if you want to look through that picture.
Okay, I'm sorry, Pico was out and checked out the lighting mess out there. I didn't know Pico had raised all of our issues, and he said there are no lights out, so they listed to address that issue. I don't know if they put an issue for land, or that Pico leaves that there's plenty of light in that area, and same with the tree trim, it was.
Can I comment on that? That wasn't just directly about the parking lot, the request for additional light was for, if you want to call it the lower end of this parking lot, as you can start going down, the current light that's there is where the trail is, where the switchback trail is. So that, the thought was maybe additional light to light up the entire parking lot, people would park there, so that's, that's where that came from. And the, the light that was out, that was partly down the hill, that was fixed, and the tree limb trimming, tree limb trimming does not look like it took place, and I really don't know if Pico would do that, but most of the lights coming up the hill could use some trimming around.
Well, she, she put it in order for trimming around the lens, so do you know the additional lights put on that pole that's not at the lot? Because I thought it was at the lot, and they didn't would have.
No, I don't know, there's not, there's no additional light at the lot.
No, I don't think so.
You have to, you would have to look at the pole number, that should be the pole that's, if you're facing the lot, it should be to your left or towards going down the hill.
I'll check, I'll check, I'll check into the mark and see if there's additional, if there's a light on that.
There are at least three different areas, alternative areas for snow rule, so we could use this year round. And we had thought, rather than the lighting, using the bumpers with lineators on the end, so when it snows, they can still see where the parking lights are. So council feels that they want to move forward with this, and I believe it would just be a motion on how you want to do it, and I believe you're leading to those, my lady.
Since the, since we last talked about it, didn't they dump some more fines up there? Some more road shavings?
Millings?
Millings. I'm just curious if they should be considered to be spread a little bit. Seems to be awful lot black material in the back, I'm just wondering if we should, before we put the bumpers down.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Should we see if it needs to be spread? May or may not, I'm just saying, look at it before we put the bumpers down.
Yeah, that's what I think also, I'd see that, maybe we could level it out a little bit.
Yeah, I think the intent, the last time we talked about it, Vince was still here, was if any road millings came about, they were going to dump them up there for future spreading. I just don't know if that's finalized or not.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's finalized, I know that the mowers that are turned down will keep vehicles moving over, go too far, shall we say.
Right, right, well, just take a look at it, if it's good, it's good.
Bob, how were you, or who, who figured out the number of parking spaces?
Was it ten or twelve?
I don't remember, but how did you, how did you have it laid out? Was it straight or was it angular?
It was straight in.
Straight in, one row straight in?
Yep, straight in.
Okay.
Senator Joey, straight in.
We wanted a turn at this point, and we wanted, wanted to rent it in, daily use or monthly.
I don't wish they were going to monthly because, yeah, they thought hencewise, they might just toss those things, those kiosks over the hill.
So we got to develop a, a different permit maybe for up there?
Hereafter, we cement the kiosk in the ground. The kiosk, the kiosk are cemented and lag bolted to the ground, they won't get those out. Oh, yeah, they're, they're in the ground. That's interesting.
It is, it's not per, it's either kiosk or it's a monthly.
Well, how, how would one know if the monthly parker was in the parking spot?
He has a license there.
So the police would have to check the license to see if somebody's not supposed to be there?
Yeah. What usually happens at Opera House or at the jail, if someone comes and pulls in there and they're not supposed to be there, then usually the renter calls us, we go over and ticket and tow them. That's how we.
The only issue is, this isn't a, this isn't on Broadway, this isn't on Euro Street, this is in a, an area that sometimes doesn't have a lot of activity, and I think there should be lighting there if we're going to do this, because some people get away with some nasty things before we would know it up there. That's my concern, and with a kiosk up there, I don't, you know, they're ripping ATMs out of banks, I don't think they're going to have any problem taking a kiosk out on Way Stairs up there, so.
If I may, I think, Maureen, don't we have a list of residents awaiting borough parking? Yeah, okay. So, and I presume that would be, they'd be prioritized? I mean, we'd contact them and let them?
Yes, she's the car.
All right. Cross that bridge, but anyway, that would, that would seem to be the fair way to do it, is to contact those residents and say, hey, we've got X amount of spots available, first come, first served.
Are we going to have?
They, they mostly want to be downtown, I talked to a couple of them, they don't want to go up there.
Are we going to have?
Employees might.
We have to go to the parking lots, we can go the same time as you have in the parking.
Okay, for the other side. My concern, my only concern about the whole situation is that there is no sidewalk for people to walk up and down, so if you're looking to generate revenue from somebody that lives down on Broadway or what have you, there is no pedestrian accessibility for that, legal pedestrian accessibility for that.
There's ten cars parked every day, horrible with lot of state life plates on it, almost all the time.
I think there has to be light in there, it's just a place that doesn't have a lot I, I think there has to be light up there, um, uh, it's just a place that doesn't have a lot of action from time to time, so that's just my concern up there. Um, and if we're, if we're, um, blessing this, this area as a, as a borough parking area, uh, we have some responsibility up there to, to whoever's going to rent it. Right now, it's whoever wants to pull in there and do whatever they want. But now, we're going to, the word is sanction this area, so. That's all, I, I'm not saying in here, I'm just saying a concern.
Put that on the motion? So the thing, I don't have any way of doing it, if you want to do it? And we would have to, if you do move forward, we would have to have our lineaters. We have a rubber and scotch, and we'd have to chat on the sun. So it may not happen immediately.
All right, next up was the Memorial Park Phase Three Grants Plan. I had earlier mentioned that we did not get the, um, C N R call. So we need to, uh, quarterly, moving forward. And I believe we had discussed, um, implementing our Phase One and Two, uh, getting some, some, uh, person in there, so to speak, and, uh, getting, um, what we already have approved and can fund moving. And then, uh, the thoughts were, was to, I guess we could, and correct me if I'm wrong, Maureen, we could use, I guess we could do a small, we could change our scope for the Phase Three and, and make it smaller or attempt to keep the scope the same. And, and plan for the twenty twenty four grant round, we'd keep the same scope, maybe get some other grants.
Maureen, we just kind of just say, so we would look at applying this year for the Green Waste, Trail Recreation and Parks Grant and the L S A grant. And if we get awarded one for both of those grants, depending on the amount, we could put those towards next year's D C N R grant. Green Waste and L S A twenty twenty three, D C N R twenty twenty three.
And that would help provide the match funds?
Yeah.
And then we also talk about, is the C D V funds possibly available for, for that?
Come around. And while, while we're waiting on this construction of Phase One and Two, is moving forward so we have a better idea of how the future is looking with it.
I don't have a plan up in front here, I gotta look it up. But does Phase One or Two by any chance take out basketball courts or anything?
No.
If you're in?
Yeah.
So there, we'll start basketball.
Yeah.
Okay, so for that one? For course of action? Memorial Hall windows, Joey, you want to give us a update on that? I think I just put the pole and get the windows in the back offices fixed up.
Yeah, we got, um, we got several, well, we got a few. As an, um, one company you do not contact, uh, yeah, one company was an estimate. So the two that we did against, um, was, uh, were installed. Uh, the other, third one was from thirty eight, or buildings and first track, um, to the first, to do my house. Those windows, uh, they didn't require, uh, to reconsider reading, because I think they were not, uh, recommended. It's kind of an application. So, uh, because my, my first one, I was wearing some of those. Um, their, their installation, the way it was designed to me would be, uh, a lot better in terms of what they approved and how they put it back in. Um, and just the way they, they capping and anything like that would be a little bit more well thought in my personal opinion.
It looked like their, uh, lead time was a little shorter as well.
Their lead time is way shorter.
Which, you know, this is, you know, time is, uh, it's, uh, it's hard.
And we still have a lot of work. It is talking about the windows and we're going to print everything and whatnot, you know, to get that already, but having the windows that, you know, we don't want to put too much into it before we go to another place. Otherwise, if it, if it's due week, then we're early in the construction. Yeah, so, yeah, times, uh, yes.
Mr. President, uh, Ms., uh, manager, do we have the money?
Yes.
Okay.
The money.
In between the two quotes, we're, we're only looking at, that's six hundred dollars, no, seven hundred dollars. So, forty-six thirty, the window door was thirty-nine fifty.
Well, that's what we paid our P S N for, give us a recommendation, give us some recommendations.
About the installation, the way that, the way they're going to mount them, that's really what comes in. Northeast has a better.
If we want permit fixed, as permanent as we can get. Okay, so we'll put Northeast. I just submitted his emergency services, the men's, council member's training update.
Do you guys have updates for us?
I have one course to finish.
Do you want us to have it finished by a specific deadline, Maureen? And I will. Because I have, I have other stuff to do, I'm just pitch patching around with it, but do you want it all done?
We put it in effect, people are being repaying for the residents. If we're ever in a situation, that's only ten, there's not any deadline, but.
Okay, okay. It's, it'll get done then.
And you think your role is this? And I will ask for, I think, you know, ask for a motion to adjourn and then council will go into the second regarding the first.
I vote to adjourn.
Second, you're good.
Yes, second, if you have any questions, or favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Michael, could you give me a ride home after we've completed?
I'm unable to tonight.
Okay, are you leaving now?
What's that?
Are you leaving now?
No, but I'm going somewhere else.
Oh, you are going somewhere else? Bob, can you give me a ride home so I don't have to drag Jake on or back out here?
What time are you leaving?
I'll, I'll second stay till the end. I don't have, my babysitter doesn't have, I can leave when you leave, yeah.
All right, I'll give you.
Yeah, he doesn't have an age, so it's nice, so. And I'm going to go out and smoke. I thank you, I appreciate it. No, you're good. Don't mind me. I'm just sneaking to the corner. I have like five minutes. I don't have enough mutuals to, um, have more mods, Sage, that's the problem. Because I don't like people, a lot of people seeing me friends only videos when I post them. So I only have like a handful of mutuals. And I think my live streams just get really out of control sometimes when I'm, like, in these meetings and it can be a lot for my mutuals to see these comments and stuff. So, I don't, like, it's okay if people drag me. I don't want you guys to feel like you have to stay in here, um, and like, watch all this stuff and like, listen to all these things that people say about me. I don't pay attention to the comments. My kid just texted me, I forgot to order the Domino's before I came to work. I feel so bad, I have to go right in as soon as I get back to executive session. I shouldn't do that on my live stream, I'm going to get banned. Okay, let's see. Um, any comments of question? Just a bunch of crazy stuff. This got a little out of hand tonight. Okay, I'm not going to read all the comments. People say crazy things. I love you guys. I'm going to get out of here and get back to work. Um, I'll see you later.